This conference will now be recorded.
Good, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dave, for setting on. We are now recording, so we'll begin. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia, Town Council Chair of the Town of Stratford. Today is Happy New Year. Today is January 11, 2021. It is 6:46 p.m., and tonight, we're going to begin the public forum aspect of our meeting. Margot, if you could list off the first persons who signed up. And just as a reminder to everyone, as always, we're going to ask everyone to keep it to three minutes or less, per the council rules of procedure. And if you could just state your name and address for the record. Thank you. So, Margot?
Okay, caller number one, Barbara Heimlich.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi, how are you, councilman? I am addressing the town council tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara Heimlich, 91 College Street.
Thank you very much.
I am addressing the town council. Okay, I'll start again. I'm addressing the town council tonight as editor of the Stratford Crier, a nonpartisan community newspaper that started in July. Our goal is to bring people together to create a sustainable and resilient community in Stratford through the digital publishing of a town-centric publication to inform and update Stratford residents on community events through various categories of interest, information, or input into a particular category, or task, or project. It has never been more apparent than during this global pandemic, when we have become isolated from our family and friends, community events and gatherings have been canceled, and our local government has been operating remotely, with limited ability for residents to attend meetings. The loss of the Stratford Star is lamented, and it's a void that we are hoping to fill. During this pandemic, there has been a spike in people moving to Stratford. In December, 987 single-family homes and 199 townhouse and condos closed. These new residents have been limited in their ability to get to know Stratford, our services, our government, and recreational activities. Real estate agents do not provide welcome packages to their clients, leaving them to find information on voting, town services, et cetera, on their own. That is why the Crier will begin publishing a feature called Know Your Town. We have secured the services of a journalism professional to reach out to each of our town council members individually, to interview them, beginning with the first district. We will email council members, and you can either have a telephone interview, or be interviewed digitally via email. The questions are not political in nature. Actually, they're kind of softball. For example, where is District One? What is it that you think residents should know about District One? What is a don't-miss event or location in District One? To all in the council, as well as residents participating in tonight's forum, please feel free to contact the Crier with events your organization is promoting or sponsoring, as well as sign up to receive the paper, along with the 759 digital subscribers we already have. By the way, there is no charge for being a subscriber. If you would like to read the town crier, go to www.strafordtowncrier.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Perfect timing, too. Thank you very much, Barbara. Margot, who's next?
The next speaker is caller number two, Jennifer Budai. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
No, you got that right, Margot. Hello, Jennifer Budai, 173 Woodcrest. Thank you, town councils, for listening to our comments. The inquiry I have, really, at this point is, today, we've learned that we're up to 122 lost souls in Stratford from the COVID-19 pandemic, and unfortunately, I'm sure those numbers will continue to grow. And I would like our town council to take under consideration a space in town, be it Booth Park, Longbrook Park, wherever you may see fit, where we can have some type of memorial that we can all go to pay our respects to the people who have lost their lives due to this disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Margot, our next caller?
The next speaker is caller number seven, Tom Gallotti.
Hi, good evening, Tom Gallotti, 492 King Street. Good evening, Mr. Chair and councilors. I just have something short and simple request, and that is, how can we get the press box at DeLuca Field to be named after the recently passed Hal Baird? For well over the past 30 years, Hal spent many spring and summer nights and weekends in that booth at DeLuca Field, whether it was broadcasting for the Brakets, Stratford High Softball, or national tournaments. Hal's voice was heard all over the place. The people that came to the field knew his distinctive voice, and this is going to be a big loss for everybody that goes there. I think it would just be fitting to his legacy to have the press box named in his memory and his honor. And I'd like to see what we could do to get the ball rolling before, you know, the Brakets' season opens, you know, in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Margot, was that the three?
Yep, that was the last person that signed up.
Excellent. I'd like to call, conclude it. Thank you all for the public forum. We'll reconvene at 8 o'clock on this line. Thank you, everybody.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We're starting a few minutes late, just trying to identify everybody on these Zoom calls or go to meeting calls. My name is Chris Pia. Thank you for attending the Town of Stratford's January 11, 2021, regularly scheduled town council meeting. It is 8:04, and we're going to begin by calling the meeting to order, and we'll have an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilor Poissons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'd just like to go with one of Dr. Martin Luther King's favorite expressions. "Here is the true meaning and value of compassion and nonviolence, when it helps us to see the enemy's point of view, to hear his questions, to know his assessment of ourselves. For, from his view, we may indeed see the basic weaknesses of our own condition. And if we are mature, we may learn and grow and profit from the wisdom of the brothers who are called the opposition." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of December 14, 2020, 20 minutes. I'll just take a motion.
This is Lauren Dan.
I have Councilwoman Dancho first. Someone like the second?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Second by Councilor O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passed at 10-0. Thank you all. We're going to move past item two, under item three. Everyone was included with their pony. There was a letter of resignation. It's for informational purposes only, from a David DiCilio, as an alternate for the, he was an alternate on his own reporting appeals. The item 3.2 is the monthly tan report. Dawn, if you'd like to bring us up to speed in terms of cash flow and how we're doing.
Sure, Councilman Pia. Can everybody hear me? Yes?
Yep, you sound pretty good.
Okay, great. So, in the report, there was the cash flow dated 1/5/2021. And as you are aware, we are again deferring taxes as taxpayers apply. They have to go through an application process. So far, we've received 22 applications, I was told today. I don't have a dollar amount on that yet. But in the report, we made an assumption that taxes would not, the non-escrow portion of taxes would not show up until April, so we moved the numbers over, and you'll see that reflected. If you have the report printed in color, it's the yellow line that shows taxes on the bottom of the revenue. So, you'll see an amount on 129, which is the balance of what we, the normal escrow amount we would receive. And then, you'll see the next amount, large amount, is on 49. So, that would be after the deferral period. Now, that's, you know, a worst-case scenario. So, you'll also notice, if you go to the end of the report, we have a large debt payment due right at the beginning of the next fiscal year, and you'll see the cash position gets very low by the end of the year. And that's because there's a lot of capital projects, the schools, some clean water fund projects. And we did ask for revised cash flow statements from those projects, and those have been incorporated in this report. And that pushes out a lot of the reimbursements to next year. So, as a result, we're really just keeping an eye on the capital projects and trying not to work on anything that isn't critical at this point until we get a better handle on where we are in April. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Dawn. Dawn, I'll just start off. You said it was 22 applications, or 25, I'm sorry?
22.
22. And how does that compare to the spring when we did this?
Well, it's about the same amount that we had in spring, but we're only in, you know, about a week now. So, we're anticipating more.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Questions for Dawn on the tans?
Hey, hey, Dawn, this is Bill O'Brien.
Bill O'Brien, go ahead, Councilor O'Brien.
Just offhand, you know what percentage are paid from escrow accounts?
I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but it's about $30 million.
Okay, thanks.
Greg, did I hear you trying to ask a question?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Go ahead.
Looking at the, what I'll call the taxes in yellow at the bottom of each page, we're getting a big influx at the end of January and at the beginning of April. And we're looking at a year-end for about $185 million in property taxes. Should we be seeing more, like, $90 million coming in, in the second half, you know, starting this month through June?
Well, this is just half the year. So, we had about $5 million. Well, let's see, we had $5 million that came in earlier, so that's 30. I'm sorry, I have to look at these numbers here, 30. And that would be about 65. And some of that is paid, more is paid earlier in the year, because this is only if people have half payment, you know, if they have to pay twice a year. So, these are numbers based on, you know, what we were doing last year. But I can look into that and see if that needs to be updated. I did review it the other day with, I mean, the total, if you're looking at the total, it does come out to 97%. So, I think the numbers in here, the report doesn't show the previous half of the year, because otherwise, the report would be too long. So, I usually only print it from where we are now, kind of going forward. But that 185 number is a good number for 97%. So, I would say these numbers are accurate, or as close, you know, as close to accurate for the projection as possible.
Just one ask. If we're looking at 25 plus 35, maybe $65 million, maybe what I'll call the second-half payments, maybe we've already banked $30 million of that. So, we're definitely on track to achieve the 185 per year-end.
Yeah, we're, I mean, depending on what these deferrals come in at, we're on track, yes. We've been on track. This is, we're going into an area now that we've never been in before, so it's hard to estimate what the impact of deferrals are going to be for this month. So, the deadline is February 1. And so, next month, we'll definitely know for sure, you know, where we stand.
I was just hoping more. It does. I was just hoping that we would have gotten $90 million revenue in the second half of the year, give or take, versus, say, the $60 million that's reflected here. But if it's already been recognized, then that's also good news. So, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions for Dawn on the tans report? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on. Dawn, thank you very much, as always. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 4.1, Madam Mayor, Mayor's Report.
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you, councilors. Happy New Year. This is the first time we've been together since the New Year. I hope you've had an enjoyable holiday with your family and friends. As we approach Martin Luther King Day, I'd like to also follow in kind, as with the counselor from the 6th District, that we are very thankful for Dr. Martin Luther King's guidance. And I'd like to share this quote with you. "Nonviolence is powerful, is powerful, and just a weapon, which cuts without wounding, ennobles the man who wields it, and it's a sword that heals." So, I'd like to update you on the Corona pandemic within Stratford. We're on Week 44 of the pandemic. The Health Department continues with contact tracing, testing, advertising, coordinating logistics, vaccinating. As you probably heard today, we are getting into the next round of 1B, and then that will now include people who are 75 years of age and older. The Health Department is responding to complaints, providing instruction and recommendations. They have confirmed 2,871 cumulative COVID cases in Stratford, 236 probable cases as of this evening, for a total of 3,107 cases. It represents an increase of 76 confirmed cases and two probable cases since our last report on January 8. The Health Department continues to monitor these increases and trends. Unfortunately, there have been 122 deaths since the beginning of the pandemic. Town Hall continues to be open by appointment only. Staff remain staggered in alternating schedules between reporting in person and teleworking as possible. While all offices remain open and staffed, again, we encourage any residents who have business, if they can do transactions online, through mail, or over the phone, those are the preferred methods. Vaccination updates for Stratford. Connecticut is currently in Phase 1A of the vaccine distribution, but will be moving into Phase 2B next week. These eligible in Phase 2B include frontline essential workers, individuals and staff in congregate settings, and individuals of 75 years of age and older. For all individuals 75 years of age and older, the Stratford Health Department is waiting complete direction from the state regarding the process that residents over 75 years of age will use to access and register to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. As soon as we have this information, we will post it on our Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter account, and on the town website. In the meantime, if you have residents that you know of who are 75 years of age and older and would like to receive the vaccine, they can contact the Health Department or email the Health Department. If they have an email, the Health Department will set them up to be on the VAM system, which will allow them access to then pick their vaccination site. More information will come, and if we have anything concrete, we will send it to you via email this week. The Connecticut COVID-19 Vaccine Advisory Group will meet on January 14, and we anticipate more information at this time. Again, people can check the state's main website for the vaccine portal to get more up-to-date information. If you are an employer who has employees who are eligible for Phase 1B, again, going to the state portal will give you directions on how to load their names and information. If you are an employer or organization who's ready to, now you can do it immediately. And then, when you get your employees registered on the site, you have options to choose your vaccine sites. And then, for an individual who is eligible for the vaccine, who is not affiliated with an employer, they can do the same. Again, if you have any health questions on this, please feel free to call the Health Department. They will be more than happy to help you. We remain at a red level in Stratford, and we have of 164 towns, of 169 towns, excuse me, 164 at the red level. So, we had some recent events. We lost a true fighter and navigator of our region with the passing of former State Senator Ed Gomes. Ed proudly served the people of the 23rd Servitorial District in various other capacities over many years. I have many fond memories of working with Ed. He's quite a straight shooter. And we worked on several projects of importance to Stratford and the region while serving together in the legislature. Our collective prayers are with his families and loved ones, and we will strive to ensure that his legacy of service is not forgotten. National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was yesterday, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of those who serve in law enforcement here in Stratford, for the state and elsewhere, and for keeping all their faith in us and doing the right thing for us, keeping the front lines and of our community safe. We've had several holiday toy drive events in Stratford in partnership with the town, Stratford Pal, Sterling House Community Center, and Stratford Emergency Services. And I want to thank everyone involved in their roles in making these holidays bright for those, especially those in need. Connecticut Magazine and Restaurant Award winners are House of Pho, who received the Experts Pick in Vietnamese and a Hidden Gem category, Kingston Cafe, who received Experts Pick Award for Caribbean, Gaetano's Deli, who received the Experts Pick Award for lunch, and Little Pub, who received the Fairfield County Reader's Choice Award for lunch. And congratulations to all of those restaurants. Rick Marcone departed as the Stratford Democrat Registrar of Voters this month, and I want to thank him not only for his 12 years of service as registrar, but also for all he has done and continues to do for our town. He has given a lot of service into youth sports, music, and theater. He served on the Roosevelt Forest Commission as Chair, who is the Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, as well as he continues to serve on the Parks and Recs Commission, Stratford Board of Education Athletic Review Committee, and is active in supporting Sterling House Community Center. I know that Rick will remain active and continue to support the community he loves. We have a Christmas tree collection by the Parks Division, who has begun picking up Christmas trees last week, and they will continue for the next six weeks till February 14. When you deposit your tree at curbside, please remove all the ornaments and decorations from the tree, and do not wrap the trees in plastic. As Dawn mentioned, we have the tax deferment for local property taxpayers. Once again, we've been directed by the Office of Policy and Management through the Governor's Office of Executive Order 9R. We have a 90-day deferment for taxes on real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and municipal sewer charges from the day they are due. You, as this body has authorized the participation in this program last April by unanimous vote, and no new decision or vote by you is warranted. As with the previous deferment in the spring, those eligible for the deferment will need to document and attest to the significant economic impact due to COVID that they've encountered. And then, the town will follow the guidance of OPM as for the criteria and eligibility. The deadline for applying is February 1. The deferment is available by application only, and the application can be found on the town's website under Tax Collector. We have a device drive for 20, it's called Device Drive 2021, and it's in association with Stratford Strong. We are holding a digital device drive at the Baldwin Center from 11 to 1 p.m. on Martin Luther King Day, on Monday, January 18. The event is organized by the Digital Dreams Project to collect idle unused and functional devices from residents' homes, and the donations will be refurbished and redistributed to residents. So, if you have old tablets, old phones, old computers, those are all the things that we're looking to collect. And the Digital Dreams Project through the, well, too many D's, through the Digital Device Drive will refurbish all these and send them back out to our residents. We have an exciting new venture called the Shakespeare Market, which is a bi-monthly outdoor food and craft market held on the first and third Sundays of the month on the grounds of the American Shakespeare Festival Theater. And that will launch on Sunday, January 17, and will have food and craft vendors and activities. And it is supported by the community partner organizations. The market will go through April 17. The Raymond T. Goldback VFW Post, in collaboration with the American Red Cross, will be holding a blood drive on Thursday, January 21, from 1 to 6 p.m. at 100 Veterans Boulevard. We have some business openings here in Stratford. The Orin Oak Bird House, I called it the Chicken Coop, because they have mostly chicken sandwiches, but it's called the Bird House. It's opened by the same owners of Orin Oak Restaurant, which is located in Orin Oak Plaza. And the Orin Oak Bird House is on Main Street in the location of the former Hudson Deli, which is located at 2377 Main Street. And by the way, the Stingray Sandwich is delicious. The Surfside Motel, we had a ribbon cutting, announce, air quotes, announce, the operation of the hotel. The rooms are absolutely beautiful, so I would encourage you, if you have a chance and you're down there, just to go by and take a look. Car Ride of Stratford, which is 2095 Barnum Avenue, which is the site of the former Jim Berry's Car Dealership, is open. Cakes by Sonia, 2067 Barnum Avenue is open. And I heard her delicacies are awesome. I saw that on Stratford Ladies. Tripolte's American Grill, which is at Knott's Landing on the dock, is open. And the self-storage at Knott's Landing is scheduled for a ribbon cutting on 1/25/21. Because of COVID, they're limiting the access to it, but I'm sure you will all get an invitation. Let me give you an update on the Connecticut CARE Small Business Grant. DECD continues to notify businesses through January 15. Towns will be able to see what businesses applied and received the grant in the next several weeks. The CDBG Micro Enterprise Grant, 40 small businesses have applied so far. 24 have been accepted by the Economic Development Office to forward to the Community Development Administrator. On the center school property, we have two informal proposals that will be presented to RDA at the January meeting. The RDA will be listening to the various proposals, and will be putting together an RFP for the site. Contract Plating, the Economic Development Department is in the process of editing the marketing plan that was provided pro bono following the Brownfield Conference presentation. The plan will be forwarded to RDA, who is planning to market the property the next few months. Exciting news, the Army Engine Plant Record of Decision will be completed by the end of January, the beginning of February. Once the rod is completed, the dredging of the multi-flat, mud flats can be put out to bid. And as stated, the dredging should take between 12 and 18 months. An agreement between the Army and the developer must be completed within six months of the Record of Decision. So, just the sequencing of events, once the rod has been authorized by the Army in Connecticut Deep, the stewardship agreement will also be authorized between Connecticut Deep and the Army. That stewardship agreement lays out the development options for the developer for the upland use, which is the land. And as one thing starts, then everything starts to roll sequentially. So, it's really exciting news for Stratford. The Shakespeare Property, the Subcommittee presented their report to the RDA at a special meeting on December 3. The Subcommittee did a wonderful job of presenting different size and types of venues, along with multiple business plans. The RDA will reconvene the next RDA meeting in January. It was discussed at the meeting on the 3 that any RFP that goes out should align closely with the Subcommittee's report. Of course, the master plan was accepted by the Airport Commission last week. Complete Streets, the consultant is now in 60% design drawings after addressing the most of the comments back from when the 30% design was presented. It includes ending the bike lane near Town Hall instead of on-road ending at Barnum Avenue intersection. The local traffic authority members did not meet in December due to snow, but we are waiting for approval from the LTA, who will most likely meet the third week in January. They have already met in early December with suggestions. We received an approval letter from PW on the maintenance of the green paints proposed for the bike lanes. for the bike lanes. In order to proceed with the 60% design, two letters are required from the mayor seeking federal highway authorities' approval on the proposed green paint on the bike lanes, which I gave to Smith today, and on the bike boxes both received. These letters will be forwarded to MetroCog so they can relay them to the federal highway staff. We are meeting with MetroCog and the consultant on a weekly basis on Friday afternoons to speed up the process of completing the 60% designs and send those to DOT by the third week in January. 495 Lordship Boulevard, demolition and remediation are completed. GFI, the owner, will be submitting a building permit and plans to deep before the end of the year, or half submitted by the end of the year. The 360,000 square foot building is currently being marketed, most likely a distribution center. Ryder's Landing, also known as Parkway Plaza, is before you tonight regarding the abandonment of some town streets. The future Parkway Plaza highlights are its signature waterfront and gateway development, upscale restaurant, retail, hospitality destination. Design promotes tourism, education and community, encourages pedestrian and recreational use, connects to the Sikorsky Bridge bikeways, walkways, incorporates the Merritt Parkway architectural design, and integrates the adjacent Merritt Parkway Museum. The Crane Mount Partnership is not town property. Economic Development has reached them multiple times. This is the Brixmore ownership, and they are not interested, interested in redeveloping the former Bally's Building at this time. Ross and Roberts, the listing broker, has indicated they expect something from, to come through within the next couple of weeks. However, they're not going to disclose the details until they have an agreement. Stratford Avenue Rotary, Bruce Jackson, who's on the call, has sent our traffic flow layout to VIP. John Casey is checking on the town, who is what we're waiting for at DOT. We are still not from, heard from you about lighting plan. There's a lot of work to do on this project, so there's some follow-up for us. 91 Wood Ave., the council is going to be vote, reviewing that for, recommending an 824 review to send to the planning commission. 11 Old South, Kelly Kerrigan is pricing the cleanup of the tires and the oil drums that have to be removed. The town has also applied for an assessment grant. Once the tires have been removed, we will discuss with RDA as to whether we should put the property on the market with the stipulation of a reverter clause to be in place to guarantee the new owner does go into state Brownfield Program. We did the exact same thing with, because by ensuring that the owner of the property goes into the Brownfield Program, we are protecting ourselves as well as the state about the next actions on those properties. Knott's Landing Storage Facility, the ribbon cutting, as I mentioned, is 1/25, and limited attendees will be, invitations will be extended due to COVID. Some staff news, I promoted Tom Albert to Acting Deputy of Public Works, and.
Madam Mayor? All right, hang on, everybody. Madam Mayor, if you can hear me, we've, we've lost your audio and video. Laura, if, Laura, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, shucks.
Yeah, hold on one second. Laura, can you hear me? Can you not? If you can hear me? I'm coming through OK for one, right? OK. Yeah, let's, hang on one second. Laura?
Chris, it looked like she was just wrapping up. I'm not a lip-reading expert, but it's, it looked like she said, and that's my report, and she picked her papers up and put them down.
All right, and I, till she, and she's not acknowledging, that's the concern, is she's not seeing us, I think, right now, so. Laura, can you hear me by any chance? Brian, do you recommend, can we ask her to maybe call in, or, excuse me?
You could take a pass on this and then proceed to the next item, then come back to her once we reestablish the connection, if she was not completed, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'd like to give her the benefit of the doubt and the opportunity to make sure that, you know, and then before we open up her questions to the mayor, she can't respond at the moment anyway, so. Here's what I'm going to do, but what would be appropriate is have someone contact her and just maybe ask her to, to come back in, and I'll, I'll move on, and we'll come back, obviously, to make sure she's wrapped up and questions from there. If, if Mike Downs or Chris Timniak, if you're on, if you could, please take care of contacting the mayor. Thank you. So, so everyone listening, council, and everybody, what we'll do is we will come back as soon as we reestablish to confirm, wrap her up, and then we'll go to questions from there, OK? All right. Okay, hold on. Can you hear me now, Laura?
No, we're not.
Yeah, you're going in and out. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, we have a slight delay on you. OK, so, did you, are you all, there was, I think, the last bit of your report we, we lost you on? Mayor, we, the last bit of your report, we lost you on. Are you, are you concluding everything you needed? We didn't hear the last end. And there's something wrong with her, her internet.
So, I can hear you. Would you like me just to call in?
Yes, please. If you can call in, that would be better, because there's a very large delay on your audio and visual. All right, we'll give it a second, everybody. All right, what I will do, I'm assuming she's calling in, so why don't we just keep going and Attorney Leclerc's advice will come back and circle back with her. So, next item on the agenda is 4.3.1, The Building Needs. I'll entertain a motion for that item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1A. This is for the HVAC system at Stratford High School.
OK, motion to approve item 4.3.1, item A.
Chris, I'll second.
Caitlin, OK, I heard Caitlin on the second, not a problem. Discussion on this? All the notes were in the, in the pony, in the Building Needs and Public Works Committee reports. Anyone else have any other questions or discussion? Nope? OK, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Nope, motion passes unanimously, 10-0. Thank you. Next item, 4.3.1B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1B for the Baldwin Center renovation project.
OK, item, seconded by Counselor O'Brien, thank you. Discussion on this? As we know, we've been putting a lot of, we've been putting some good capital into this, this is an ongoing project, and I think it's smart, you know, that we're getting this done, obviously, in light of what's going on with the pandemic, you know, the senior population can't use the, the building right now, so I think it's, it's good that we get a lot of this work done right now for them in the future. Any, any other discussion or thoughts on it?
Greg, can?
Greg, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, is, can someone speak to the year that the funding was authorized in the CIP?
Yeah.
And what, does it come below it, or?
Mr. Timniak, are you on? Hold on, Greg. Did I lose Timniak, too? Or Dawn, Dawn, are you still with me? So many screens here.
I am here, but I do not have that information in front of me, but I will look it up and interrupt when I find it. That's the best I can do right now.
I believe it was last year's, Greg. Don't quote me, don't hold me to that. Dawn will confirm, but I believe it was last year's capital.
And whether it came in on or under budget?
We'll get back to you on that. Any other discussion on the item? No? OK, hearing none, we'll call that for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.2.
Excuse me, Chairman Pia, do you want me to, I have some information. So, we're, we're talking, we're talking about the Baldwin Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what we're talking about, upgrades? So, we had in the year 20, the project, we had Baldwin, Baldwin Center upgrades for 800,000, and we've spent 455,000 of that to date, and we have some money in purchase orders still. We have 276, 605 available, and then in 21, which is the last approved plan, we had 200,000 in, and that we have not spent yet.
Gotcha, so stage over two.
Dawn, Greg can. Is that OK, Chris?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, just.
Did I hear roughly 200 plus 200?
276.
276 is the balance from the previous year, and then last year, we had 200,000 allocated and no authorized.
And we're approving 642, which will be funded. I mean, it's, the money's going to come from somewhere. It's a project, Chris, you described, is a time to get it done. Just trying to keep track of where the money will come from.
Did we lose Mr. Timniak? I hear you, Greg. Did we lose Mr. Timniak?
He's on, he's muted.
Chris Timniak, can you hear me? It's a good night for technology. We're having a good one. We've been doing.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I got you, Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh my God. It keeps going in and out, I'm sorry, folks.
It's OK. Can you speak to Greg's question regarding the, we're talking about the Baldwin Center, the 642?
Yes.
Go ahead, on the funding schedule.
I think Dawn just covered, did Dawn just answer that?
Greg's question?
I don't want to.
Yeah, so Greg's.
Specifically where?
Dawn, the numbers that we, we just discussed, it was about 276, and correct me if I'm, I'm going off memory right now, 276 and then the 200, is that accurate?
Right, and we have some open purchase orders, so we have another 60, about 70,000 in open purchase orders as well.
So, Chris Timniak, Greg's question was, the remaining, if we're approving the 642, where's that remaining coming from?
Well, we also, we're also using some CBDG money as well.
OK.
Or, I don't have that breakdown in front of me. Is Renee able to, if, I mean, I can dig deeper for this right now, and we can ask Renee, or we can sort of close the deal and get back to you later.
Renee just texted that 350 is coming from Community Development Block grant.
OK.
So I think that's where the, yeah. She said she muted.
Hold on.
Technology's not a good night right now.
Margot, can you hear me?
No, but I think that answers the question then, correct?
Hang on one second, everybody. Hang on one second.
Yeah, Chris, if she muted herself, I cannot unmute her.
OK, I think she's the R. You see, it just says R.
Right, and I cannot unmute her, she must have muted herself.
Dawn, if she just texted you, would you kindly just text her back to unmute herself? And Greg, go ahead, if you want to just ask, Dawn was talking to you, so I just want to create you the opportunity.
No, we, you, we've listed four funding sources, and that's the explanation, that's good.
OK, awesome. So we're good with that. We know Renee is still muted, so we'll just be cognizant of that, so, having said, so we had our, I believe we had our second, right, Attorney Leclerc? I lost track. We were in discussion. Actually, we moved, we voted on it already, and I just highlighted Dawn, she, she came back, OK.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, you voted on item 4.3.1B.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.2, Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2 for the West Broad Street retaining wall.
Excellent. Item motion by Mr. Counselor Poissons, do we have a second to that?
Ms. Laura Dancho, I'll second.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Dancho. Discussion on, on that one, on that item. No? Mr. Casey, give a, give a good explanation of Public Works on that as well, to wrap that up, so. We've seen no other discussion, we'll call that for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No, seeing none? Awesome. Next item on the agenda is.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just, Mr. Chairman, if you could just announce the results of that vote as being 10-0.
10-0.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Town Attorney's Report.
Attorney's Report. Mr. Steve Dean, Mr. Chairman.
So, before I go, so Margot and Dave and Mr. Wright, Renee didn't mute herself, the system's preventing her from speaking. Could you try to identify? Is it possible to pull everybody off mute and then try to identify Renee?
I'm, I'm trying, she was there, we had her identified, but I, I don't know who she is now.
Renee, can you hear me, Renee? Renee, if you can hear me, please speak. All right, Dave, it looks like, if you can mute all the callers then, the non-identified.
I think Mayor Hoydick is caller 38.
Mayor Hoydick, can you hear me?
I can.
Laura, if you could just keep, say a few words, please, so I can make sure I identify the right one.
I don't think you have to try to unmute Renee, there's nothing else on the agenda that we need to talk to her about.
OK, understood. Yet, Margot, 38 is the mayor? Thank you. Everyone else is still good, then? OK. All right, Attorney Leclerc, is it OK if I go back to the mayor at this moment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be appropriate.
OK, so. Okay. So Madam Mayor, just to, for clarity, just so we're all on the same page, we, I think you cut out right at the end, end of your, of your mayor's report. We may not have heard the last item, so if you just want to kind of end with whatever you're ending with, and then we'll go to questions.
Last item was Martin Luther King's birthday, which is Monday, the eighteenth. Town hall will be closed, sanitation will be collecting, but the transfer station will be closed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. So we'll now go to questions for the mayor, item four point two. Any questions for the mayor on there?
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien, Paul, you'll go next. I saw your hand go up. You'll go next, Paul.
I've got a statement, a statement and a question for the mayor. As you know, Hal Baird once described as a legendary voice of the break dead, passed away recently. And in a television interview, General Manager Bob Baird suggested the idea of naming the press box, Press Box at DeLuca after Hal. We discussed it briefly at Parks and Rec last week, and I spoke to Bob Baird, and I've asked him to submit a letter to me so we can formally discuss it at the next meeting, and then hopefully send it to council for approval. I just wanted to check with you, is that the right process?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Yes, that is the right process.
Thank you. So we'll move forward with that.
Are you good, Bill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Paul, Counselor Taveras, you wanted to ask questions, so?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Hoyd, Paul Taveras. Talk about the eight hundred pound reel in the room. With the recent events that have happened in Washington, I want to ask you, is your office in contact with law enforcement? Or is there anything engaged to, especially since the inauguration is next week? Is there anything that can be, that I can tell my constituents if there is any situations that maybe there are some days and areas to avoid? These people all around us, they're not just in other places. They're still people that are engaged and supportive of the soon-to-be ex-president. So as far as the safety concern that I have, have, again, my question is, have you been in contact with law enforcement? Or has there been any scheduled rallies here in Stratford?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Yes, I'm in contact with law enforcement with Chief McNeil, and no, there are no scheduled rallies or events that he has been identified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions for the mayor?
Greg can.
Greg, go ahead, and then Caitlin. I heard Greg's voice first, but I got you, Caitlin. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, thank you. You gave an overview of many, I'll say, economic development projects. Is that in writing something you could forward to each of the town counselors? Second question is, can you repeat some information related to the Army engine plant, the dredging and the next steps on the land?
Counselor, thank you for the question, and yes, I can forward that information to you through the council clerk, and she can send it to all the counselors regarding the record of decision. I'm sorry, Counselor?
No, I'm, I just said, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And then the next part, I won't interrupt.
The record of decision, so the record of decision regarding the mud flats, so that's the water body and the sediment around the causeway, has been in draft form and will be agreed upon and signed by the Army in Connecticut Deep. And once we have that, we can send it to you. It's a lengthy, very technical document. But after the record of decision has been executed, then the stewardship agreement, which is the agreement between the land use from Connecticut Deep to the Army, who will, that will pass that along to the developer, will be issued. That sets up the parameter for the upland or prop, you know, the land development. And that's when things start to roll. So this past year, about a year and a half ago, the Health Department Economic Development Department and Conservation Superintendent and I went to New Bedford to watch and hear and experience a dredging site. And from there, we had determined that the dredging could be moved much quicker than a two to three or five-year period if we did twenty-four-seven dredging. So if, with those parameters, the dredging process will be between twelve and eighteen months. That's the actual process. You know, the bidding process has to happen before that to get the contractor who will do the dredging of the flats, of the mud flats.
Does that answer your question, Greg?
Yes, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Caitlin, did you, I think I saw your name before, right?
Yes.
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Hoydic, I have a question regarding the COVID vaccine rollout. With the one A phase almost being completed, I'm just curious how many vaccines have actually been administered?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. So as of last week, I believe between a hundred and eighty and two hundred vaccines were administered. All that were given to Stratford Health Department were expended. We have requested and received two hundred vaccines for our clinic on Wednesday. And I don't know how many people have signed up to register because it's a moving target. The last I heard this morning, there were fifty-six from police, and it's kind of moving. So I don't know where we are now, but I can get that information and email it to you and the rest of the counselors tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you. And then I just had a follow-up, unfortunately, related to COVID. There was a resident that called in during public comment, Jen Budai, and she had made what I think to be a very important suggestion for the town to create some type of a memorial space here in Stratford for all of the residents that have passed from the virus. If that's something that, you know, the council can directly work with you, she had suggested that it possibly be made in one of our parks, or, you know, obviously, there's nothing that's planned in any way, shape, or form. But I do think that that would be something that would offer space and healing for everyone here in town. So I just wanted to know what your thoughts were.
Well, I think, thank you, Counselor, for the question. I, I think it's always good to remember what's gone in the past and to have a place to contemplate and to share memories and to mourn a little bit, if that so be it. I would suggest that we refer this to Stratford Strong, which is our recovery group, and see what suggestions they would recommend.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Caitlin. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for calling back. Next, all right, so going back to where we left off, we finished with Town Attorney's Report. So next item, six point two, under resolution, six point two point one. I'll entertain a motion for that. Counselor Ferillo, I see your hand, sir.
Yes, I'd like to accept the resolution to, I'd like to make the resolution to accept the grant for the handicap vehicle for the town of Stratford.
Excellent. Motion by Counselor Ferillo. Do I have a second to that motion?
This is Laura Dancho, I'll second.
Motion, excuse me, second by Ms. Dancho for discussion. So Mr. Timniak, if you may, sir, just, I know we read through it on the agenda, but this is a pretty substantial grant for, looks to be mostly funded for a handicap accessible van. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And Tammy's on the line to talk about it as well.
Oh, okay. Tammy, hi, thank you.
Yes, hi. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about it. So, yeah, this is exciting news. Essentially, it's eighty percent of the vehicle will be paid for through the grant, and it just keeps the senior fleet going. And, you know, we're looking forward to the day when the center's back open again, and we are running those buses long and hard every day. So making sure that we've got, you know, good, and ADA, of course, accessible vehicles. And so we would be looking at a fifteen-passenger vehicle. It would be twelve seats, and then two for wheelchairs, plus the driver to make it fifteen. So we're very excited about it.
Excellent. We are too. Any questions for Tammy on this?
This is Greg Khan.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chris. For Tammy, I guess, historically, we maybe had a deficiency in the number of vans or in the number of drivers, and that there was a backlog of qualified residents who wanted transportation but could, did not have an available slot to get transportation. Will this van, will we be getting another driver for another van? Or are we replacing an existing van with the potential new one? And how are we working to, let's say, is there still a backlog of seniors looking for transportation?
So a couple parts to that question, right? So the first one is, I don't know if a decision has been made whether we would retire and sell one of the vehicles or keep them all in the fleet. So I think more to come. It's going to take a while for us to get that vehicle. So I think we've got a little bit of time to consider what would be the best option there. Right now, we have a full-time driver and a part-time driver. We, and currently, you know, due to COVID nineteen, we're able to meet need. But we would imagine that once we start back up and we're all vaccinated and people are, you know, moving around more, that we would probably need to bring on other part-time folks to help with the driving.
Any other questions for? Go ahead, Greg.
I'm all set. All set. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Tammy.
Any other questions for Tammy on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously, ten zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is item six point two point two. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion for that. That's a resolution regarding the Connecticut State Opiate Response, and this is a grant that was awarded to the town in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Motion made by Counselor Harden. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second to that?
Caitlin Sheikh, I'll second.
Caitlin, Councilwoman Sheikh, thank you on the second. Any discussion? Just for everyone, for point of reference, this is, I believe, an ongoing annual reoccurring grant. Tammy's nodding yes. So obviously, we'll just, we'll take it and we'll put it to work. So any, any discussion? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes unanimously, ten zero. Thank you. Next item, six point two point three. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, Councilman Dave Harden.
Councilman Harden?
Two point three. This is the resolution regarding the Fairfield County Community Foundation, and this is a grant that's been also awarded to the town from the Fairfield County Community Foundation, and this is for the Southend Community Center Summer Surrage Challenge. And this is the amount of eighteen thousand dollars.
Excellent. Counsel, a motion made by Counselor Harden. Do I have a second to this?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Taveras. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? As Dave mentioned, this is, again, another reoccurring, and actually, it helps run the, heavily run the summer camp every year at the Southend Community Center, another great, another great grant. So any, any discussion, any further on this? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passing unanimously, ten zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, six point two point four. I'm taking motion to approve. Would you like to make the motion?
I'm making motion to approve.
Okay, Counselor Taveras, thank you, sir. Do I have a second to the motion?
This is.
Seconded by Dave Harden.
I got, I got Dave Harden, I heard, I, sorry, there's a, I'm splitting right. Counselor Harden, I think you had, beat her by an nanosecond, so I'm going with you on the second. Discussion, Mr. Timniak, if you could just, just update the council on this. I know this was something, and it was included in our pony. If you could just bring us up to speed.
Yeah, we actually have Bruce Jackson on, and I believe Chris Pendeky is also on for this. This is a situation where the bidder failed to, the winning bidder failed to fulfill what he promised to do in fixing the sidewalks, restoring the sidewalks. And then Bruce can talk a little bit about where we're at going after his current bond, which he put out. And we have to go to the next highest bidder, which in this case would be the third-place bidder because the other bidder didn't want the work. So if there are any further details on that, we can go to someone else.
Attorney Jackson, go ahead, sir.
As he said, that the lowest bidder, there was, there was a concern, so we're jumping over that and going to the next qualified bidder.
Okay. Attorney Florrick, I saw your hand, sir. I just want to, did you have anything to add?
We, I was the one that was working on that. We, as Mr. Timniak said, the lowest bidder, the one that was originally awarded the contract, Reliable Excavating, defaulted. We terminated his contract. We called the bond. And now we have to get the project rolling again. So it was decided that the better thing to do would be to, since we had already bid the project out, to go with the next lowest bidder, and that turns out to be G pick. So once we know exactly what our town damages are because of the default, we will then proceed against the surety. I'm anticipating it's going to be somewhere in the area of thirty to forty thousand dollars. But there is a performance bond up that should cover that, and so that if we, if we prevail in that claim, the money should be there. But for tonight, the best thing to do is to award the bid so that the project can get going. And the, the figure is two hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars because that is the amount of CDBG funds that is remaining, and that's the funding source that was going to be used to fund this project.
Thank you, Attorney Florrick. Any question, discussion, any questions for Attorney Florrick or Mr. Timniak on that? Mr. Taveras, I see your hand. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, this chair. I've been talking about this since last August, when that last contractor did such a shoddy job with those sidewalks. There were many aprons that were cracked and damaged from the last contractor. So what is the recourse of action for, for those residents?
When you say recourse of action for those residents, what exactly, what exactly do you mean?
Is there a way that they don't incur the cost of the repair?
Well.
You have to go after the contractor individually, or, you know, what happens when?
Yeah, that's, that's right. If the contractor did damage to their personal property, their real estate or their personal property, it's individual, not town property, they would then be going after the contractor. We have terminated the contractor from doing business with the town. So, and our damages are going to be paid for through the surety, through the performance bond. The performance bond covers the town and the contract. So any, any additional damages that are private in nature that were caused by that contractor, they would have to, the individual citizen would have to go after that contract.
Dave, the question, Margot, I have a, just hold on, everybody. There's a caller that I'm getting a lot of feedback on. It just says caller, Margot, or Dave. Please. Thank you. Please. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? For Attorney Florrick?
Question for Attorney Florrick from Greg.
Counselor Khan, go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. Regarding private property, town property, if, if the private property owner notified the town about the damage, and I'll call it a punch list, would it not fall within the scope of the project to kind of all encompass, all in, you know, make things whole?
Well, conceivably, it could. I'd have to check the contract. This is a very strange contract in the sense that it was a unit price contract where the contractor was, was, was obligated to perform a certain amount of work, which was basically unspecified. The town was going to choose the streets and it wasn't specific at the time the contract was awarded. And basically was going to do the work until the, until the CDBG funds ran out. How do we, how do we guarantee that? How do we secure that? Well, a performance bond is put up. But that performance bond secures the performance of the contract. And if individual people had their own property damaged and that was not part of the contract, then that's why I say it's going to be up to them to proceed directly against the contractor. If somehow it could be fit into the contract, then yes, conceivably, it could come under the performance bond. But there is a limited amount of money that is going to be left over right now on the performance bond. And by our calculations, as I said, it's going to be another $30,000 or so that I think just the town is damaged because the way the contract is structured, since we have to go to the third lowest bidder, the town is now going to be getting less sidewalk for the same amount of money. So in order to get the amount of sidewalk it should have gotten, that's really what the performance bond is going to be used for.
Okay.
John, if I, Greg, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. You good?
Just, we can follow up later. My last point would be, would we typically in any town contract have some accommodation for damages to private property, whether we're doing roads or sidewalks, et cetera? Don't need a precise answer now. I just hope that we generally or typically include such things, not just on the town side, but also respecting the private property that's proximate to the project. That's it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Greg. And John, Attorney Florrick, Chris, if, and I was actually going to just ask you, is it possible, and again, don't need an answer now, that when, in doing these contracts in the future, we could, we could help add something in there because, you know, listen, if I, I get if the town's awarding a bid to redo the sidewalk in front of my house and then the contractor that the town chooses or the council chooses to come in and damages my property, is it, I gotta, I gotta think, we, you know, how can we work to protect, you know, because it's not their fault, right? And it's, it happens, it's a mistake. But how, is it something we could work with, with language in the future, sir?
We can take a look at that, Chris. Don't forget, though, that part of the requirement in any of these contracts is the contractor maintains liability insurance. And it's, it's that liability insurance policy that would normally be responsible for paying any damages caused by the contract.
Right. And I, and listen, I'm just speaking out for, I, I know there's probably somebody out there who may not have the means at the moment or necessarily know the process and understand of how to necessarily file small claims against that. So I'm thinking if there's any way that we can kind of bring that, a little bit of help back to our side to obviously help the residents in the end, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Yeah, we certainly could take a look at that. Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, it's Laura. We most certainly, we most certainly will take a look at it. And we will most certainly work with the residents because you're absolutely right. You and Greg and Paul hit the nail on the head. Our contractor failed to perform. If, if, if they, if he damaged residents' property and we can work together with the residents, we will, we will coordinate an effort to get the contractor to pay for the residents' damage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So I've got a couple of hands up. Caitlin, you haven't had a chance to speak on this yet. Hold on one second, Paul. Go ahead, Caitlin.
I'm just going to make a comment off of, you know, the issue that Greg, Paul and yourself just raised because, you know, a constant complaint from residents is regarding their sidewalks and what the process is. So thank you for making the suggestion of, you know, trying to include that language in future contracts so that we can make it more accessible and easier for residents to navigate if unfortunately, we find ourselves in this situation again. So just thank you.
No problem. Paul, Counselor Taveras, did you want to add something?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Florrick, I appreciate that. I really do. I, that's very, very heartening to hear. And definitely, I want to assist on this. So, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Perhaps on regards of those folks that have that. So thank you.
It's the right thing to do. So, absolutely. Thank you. Any other further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes unanimously, 10-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda under new businesses, item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill O'Brien.
Counselor O'Brien, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to send this to the Parks and Rec Committee for further discussion. And then we would send it back to the council if we agree. This is the way it should have been done in the first place.
Okay. Excellent. Motion made by Counselor O'Brien. Do I have a second to that?
Second, Dave Harden.
I got a second by Counselor Harden. Any discussion? This was, I'll just briefly update everybody as I was in this meeting for Shore Beach Commission. Shore Beach Commission voted, they looked at, excuse me, they voted to increase the non-resident rates for the golf course only by a couple of dollars here and there for non-residents only. And I do agree with Counselor O'Brien that we should, we should send this over to Parks and Rec for them to do further due diligence on this to see if this makes sense at this time. And then we can go from there. But that's where it originated. Any further discussion on it? Nope. Okay. We'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No, no opposed? Excellent. Motion passes unanimously, 10-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 7.2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Poissons, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to send to the Planning Commission for a 824 review regarding the abandonment of the unpaved portion of Van Buskirk Avenue and parcel 18235.
Motion by Counselor Poissons, do I have a second?
Laura Dantcho, second.
Councilwoman Dantcho, thank you on that. Item, this item, this one and the next one, obviously, they were both included in our pony. This is, I'm going to hand it over to Attorney Jackson for a brief update on it.
Thank you. This is, so the, there's a paper street behind, we own 91 Wood Avenue. And there's a paper street that runs behind the house. And the whole idea was, as I started looking at the value of the house to try to sell it, it occurs to me that there's this road with a lot of encroachments that needs to be, it doesn't, no benefit. So we had a conversation with the neighbors. We had a conversation with Kelly Kerrigan with regard to trees that were coming down in the area. And I'd like to get it over to Planning to see whether the town has any benefit to the road. But effectively, if not, I'd like to abandon it to the neighbors. There's a second parcel which was basically taken for taxes at some point in time, which is behind 65 Wood Avenue, but adjacent to our parcel at 91 Wood Avenue, which if we abandon the road, would become landlocked. So I'd like to have the Planning Commission look at it and make a determination whether or not there's any benefit and perhaps offer it first to 65 if they'd like to buy it. If not, I'd attach it to 91 Wood and then sell it as a part, a bigger parcel.
Okay. Any questions for Attorney Jackson on this? Again, the vote is to send this to Planning for them to look at it for an 824. We are not approving doing anything with that tonight. We're just simply sending to Planning for them to do their due diligence on the 824 review. Any questions for Bruce?
Yeah, get it expedited, Bruce.
Say again, Mr. Jackson?
Okay.
I'm just putting my foot up there.
Thank you. All right. We'll, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passing unanimously, 10-0. Thank you all. Next item is item 7.3.
Hi, this is Jim Connor from the 8th District. I'd like to make a motion to consider an act of, request for referral to the Planning Commission for the unpaved streets known as Orno Place, Leslie Street and Charlotte Street.
Okay, motion by Councilman, Councilman Connor. Do I have a second to that? I see Mr. Perillo with a hand wave. Very good. I got you, Bill. Discussion. Bruce, if I can, I'll hand this one back to you for the council. It's again, the same type of vote, sending to Planning for an 824 review. If you could just give us a brief highlight again.
Yeah, that's correct. This is a, I think that there's another attorney on the phone here. I don't know where he is. This is a parcel that was questioned whether these parcels ought to be abandoned for, for a better, a bigger project. And they, we wanted to have the council send it back to the planning to let them make a determination on the lots. And if the planning decides that they'd like to abandon the lots, then we can go, come back to council for a bigger, bigger discussion.
Okay. So this was, everyone, just to highlight again, included in your pony has the maps. The mayor spoke about that earlier. Again, sending to Planning for an 824. Any, any other discussion on the item right now? Oh, hearing none. We'll call that for a vote then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion passed unanimously, 10-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3.1, Beautification Committee.
Yes, this is Laura Dantcho. I motion to approve the appointment of Cynthia Buckley of Creston Road to the Beautification Committee for the resigned seat of Lisa McGarron.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dantcho. Do I have a second to that?
Second, I, Bill O'Brien.
I got Bill Perillo. I saw first, sorry, Bill O'Brien. Any discussion on Ms. Buckley? Her application was included, the pony for review? Nope. Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion passing unanimously, 10-0. Thank you. Last item is 7.3.2, Waterfront. Mr. Perillo, Councilwoman Perillo.
I'd like to make a motion that Jessica Robbins of Riverdale, Riverdale Drive be assigned to the Waterfront Management Commission for a five-year term.
Just, Counselor Perillo, just read exactly how, if you want, just to clarify the five-year. The terming expires actually.
I'm sorry. May 31st, 2021.
Gotcha. It was, this was for the resigned seat of Mr. Liccardo, who resigned last month. Any motion by Counselor Perillo? Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second. This is Laura.
Okay. Ms. Dantcho, any discussion? Again, Ms. Robbins' application was included. And if I may, this is actually a perfect, Ms. Robbins is also a merchant marine. So it's, it's, I think, you know, finding people in the community who have the expertise in these type of committees and commissions such as this. I mean, that's an excellent, it's an excellent match in my opinion. So any further discussion? Nope. Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passing unanimously, 10-0. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Poissons, do I have a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Counselor Perillo, beat you, Dave. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. I appreciate your patience.